We're starting. This is the January tenth, twenty twenty-three, open public meeting, the Needham Library of Trustees, being held via hybrid format, allowing remote attendance by Massachusetts Act, adopted during a pandemic state of emergency. First, I'll take a roll call to confirm that the trustees, library staff and persons anticipated to be on the agenda or present and can hear me. So for the trustees, Chair Anna Harald-Luker.
Here.
Secretary Jay Pialco.
Here.
Tom Harkins.
Here.
Carol Thompson.
Yeah.
Rob Pettit.
You're muted.
Rob, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Here.
Eric Gray.
Here.
Myself, Chair Kay Cahill. And then for library staff, we have Director Kim Hewitt.
Yep, here.
Assistant Director Demetri Kiriakas.
Here.
Technology Specialist Danielle Tawa. May not be here at the moment. Technical, let's see, who else? Do you have anyone else? Joan Smith, Library Foundation.
Hello.
No other staffers at the moment. All right, so this meeting is being recorded remote. Participants, please mute your phone or computer while not speaking. If there's any problem, it prevents the completion. This meeting will reconvene at seven PM February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'd like to request a motion to call the Needham Board of Trustees to, oh, you know, and I forgot to mention Faith Chrisley as a staff member. I'm sorry, you're sitting right in front of me. She's here. I'd like to request a motion to call the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at seven oh four. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
It was Rob, say aye.
Okay. It sounded like a no or something. Sorry, Rob. The Meeting of the Board of Library Trustees is now in session. So moving to the first item is the minutes. Say thank you. Oh, yes, a couple of comments. Actually, first on the agenda. So in consultation with Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, guidance from them, we have set up a little bit of a time, timing for public comments. Citizens are welcome to speak for up to three minutes each, not exceed a total of ten minutes. They're encouraged to inform the library director in advance of their intention to speak. And those who provide advance notice will be called upon first. So this is following both the town select board and the school board and a variety of other examples that the BLC provided. So, but we don't, I don't see any public members here tonight or on Zoom.
No.
There are, please speak. No. Okay. Okay, so now we do the minutes. Jay, Secretary, have you done?
I have, yes. The general process is they send them to me to review and I get back to them with my, you know, comments and typically minor corrections. They do such a great job putting it together. And for the most part, you know, I review the content, but I don't remember word for word exactly what was done, and I trust the minutes are accurate. That's been my impression. So anyway, that's the process.
Thanks, Faith, for the job. Do we have any corrections? Yes, Carol?
I have a couple or two things on page two.
I leave in a few things for Carol always.
Oh, thank you, Jay. You're listening.
What number does I, I don't have a page. What number is that?
Number five. At the end of the first paragraph, it's just clear that there is no control in this building even by holding maintenance. We just added the word after temperature remotely. We would say buildings, buildings and grounds controls the temperature remotely. I don't even know where. I suppose building maintenance is down at the P sub.
So you want to say Kim noted in answer your question that there are no, would you say one?
At the end of the last sentence.
The last sentence, last word of the first paragraph in five.
After temperature remotely.
Yeah. On page five, number thirteen. The last sentence is actually, I think, inaccurate. It's backwards that John Field Steel is the one who sponsored the naming for his, in memory of his daughter who passed away. So it would be named in the last sentence, the left line, named by Mr. John Field Steel.
In honor of.
Yeah, it's the other way around. And then the only other thing I had was in number fourteen on the same page. Just to clarify, in that last paragraph, library, Kim noted in that sentence, are a support for staff responding to any patron questions about book selections. I think that would be clearer about what we're really aiming at there.
Support staff responding to any patron questions, period?
Are a support for staff responding to these policies help the staff to enforce.
So delete the two words are a.
For staff responding to any patron questions about book selections. Library policies are a support for staff responding to any patron questions about book selections. Yeah, I think we suggested that. Thank you.
There.
Page four of the ten. The first sentence, I'm just going to send you the, because Anna noted that November twenty-seven was successful. I'm just going to email you the specific event. And also be worried that the elephant sponsored it.
And the event name of the event was what?
Little wordy, Women in World Jazz and so on.
Do you want to just email?
Yeah, I'll email it to you.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
So Women in World Jazz sponsored by Elephant. Yeah, that, that you can say that will be great. That makes sense. Women, Women in World Jazz sponsored by the Library Foundation. I know, it's a bit simple.
Okay.
Let's request that.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, on the bottom of page three, which is under number nine, space planning study updates. It says Kim and Earhart will be sworn in January twenty-third. Actually, we're being sworn in anytime before January twenty-third. We need to be sworn in by that date because that's the PBC, the PPBC meeting in which we will be voted.
So do you want to say sworn in by January twenty?
Yeah, so say we will be sworn in by or before January twenty-third. That's temporary numbers.
Good. That, you got that face?
It's the bottom of page three.
I got it. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Do I hear any other minutes, changes or additions? Okay, in that case, we'll take a motion to accept the minutes of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Okay, all second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, say aye.
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 Aye. I realize we're getting a delay from Rob, so I have to make sure to wait to hear.
Sorry about that.
You're on the West Coast. Look at you. He's got, he's got the Golden Gate Bridge behind him.
In Berkeley right now, but this looks better than my Airbnb, so.
Yeah.
It does. Um, okay, so Director's Report, Kim, we want to acknowledge that we are very happy to have you back. We're hoping you're feeling well. And I think, do I understand correctly that Dimitri is going to present the Director's Report?
Yeah.
He is, thank you.
And as I, as I do that, are you folks going to deal with the gift list first?
We usually do the gift list first.
Yeah.
Uh, we usually, I think we read the report and then when we get to the gift list, is that, or do you want to do it differently, Kay?
I think that is how we usually, just in the flow of the report.
Yeah, when we get to.
All right, okay.
Sorry, Dimitri, I should.
No, don't. That's okay. That's all right. So, by the way, I had a really bad call last week, so I'm fine, but my voice doesn't sound fine. So I apologize if it doesn't quite project like it normally would. So just talk a little bit about the general highlights. Our first, Erin was very successful in starting the first, hopefully, annual Needham Community Writing Contest. It's part of Nano Remo, which stands for National Novel Writing Month. She did that in collaboration with Needham Public Schools. They got over sixty entries from grades K through twelve. Can read a lot of it, but we had, we hosted an award ceremony at the library on December eighth. We had over a hundred people. Parliament with their grade teachers, four, four grade teachers at Broad Meadow School. And you could read about that. Is what I did want to hit upon, I'm not going to read all of them, but I just want to point out the bullet with Rand Corin from Technical Services that they withdrew ten thousand six hundred ninety-one titles, nonfiction biographies over the last eight months, which is a lot, making a lot of room for new stuff and also for moving things around in the collection and creating new spaces.
About that when you're ready. May I ask a question about Dimitri?
Sure.
Yeah, so I, sometimes I get a little nervous when I hear about the expunging of all these books, which I know needs to be done. I know it's important to do that. How, what safeguards do we have in place to make sure that we retain copies of, I would say, sort of important books, pieces of great literature that maybe are not as widely read as they used to be, but still are kind of important in a literary.
Tech Services does it, does it in conjunction with the selectors and the department heads. So when they, you know, the selectors determine things that need to stay in the collection, but these are items that are, they've been vetted, they, they've not moved in three to five years, they're not, they're not that kind, they don't have that kind of importance. And they take up a lot of space and we have a lot of new materials coming in and we need to create space for that and for other areas that we're trying to create in the library in terms of keeping space planning in mind. So, but we do try to keep things like that. We don't toss things indiscriminately when we get to that stage. I give it a lot of, we give it a lot of consideration.
Okay. Kim?
Oh, it's actually five to ten years.
Ten years.
Yeah, you go in front of the selectors before actually being withdrawn.
And then there is some sensitivity to books that are of some importance in terms of literature or history, even though they might not have been taken out.
Yeah. Yes.
I was just curious, is there actually a, you know, a published set of principles or guidelines that you follow when, when making these decisions?
Yeah, you can look at the CREW guidelines, C R E W. It's the professional standard for libraries. Typically, most people refer to that. And then there's a lot of, there might be additional things that we do as we're going through the stacks, like visual weeding to see like this copy is in poor condition. So the selector might look at it and weed that copy, but then order a new copy. But weeding was not happening consistently for several years. So this sounds like a lot, but it's really because maintenance wasn't being done.
Okay, um, yeah, I think Rob had, I mean, Tom had it.
As a, someone who used to teach collection development.
Okay.
And weeding was part of that. There is a standard, and when you're doing the nonfiction, as we were talking about here, different categories of books, like technology books have a lot, you know, a technology book from twenty years ago is useless. And so technology have a.
Medicine, sort of that way.
Medicine would be too. Alchemy. No, so there is a, there is a standard, and I know that we do that.
Like for historiography or something, you might want to look at one of those books, old books. So I was just going to say, isn't there also a standard that you look at what's available elsewhere and this is in the Minute Man Network?
Yeah.
We do. We would typically probably not want to withdraw something if we were one of the like two or three libraries that still had it, that kind of thing. So we, you know, we're reviewing the material. This is probably for discussion at a different point, but we will be doing some auditing of our collections and one of the, I'll say directives, I guess, that I've given the selectors is that when we're weeding, we're also paying attention to DEI. And if a title hasn't circed in like five years, but it's kind of an own voices story or representative of a non-traditional narrative kind of background or something like that, we would actually choose to keep it instead and try to figure out ways to publicize it or merchandise it, I guess, you would say, like in a display or something. So we're looking at that as well.
That's great. Okay, thank you for interesting answers that. Yeah, question. Dimitri, feel free to flow on.
Okay, well, one last point I do want to add about that into Tom's point. I mean, those titles are all nonfiction biographies, you know. Biographies, we do go over very carefully. We don't get rid of things that are in current events or in the news. We take a look at those very closely. And nonfiction, it's science, medicine. You know, we don't have any Windows ninety-five books, but if we had any old computer books, they would be gone, you know. So I, the last bullet point I have here, I haven't gotten to it yet, is I talk about weeding from fiction and the other departments, and that does take a little longer because it does take a lot of that into consideration in terms of fiction, science fiction and the YA collection. So, okay. One other point I wanted to get to, Danielle, I was submitting an application, a project description to Simmons University, the graduate school library science for to get an intern for the archives. There are a lot of projects she could use extra hands on. And we're hoping that we can, it sounds positive that we should be able to get somebody to help us and give them some experience as well. And the last thing I just want to add is Deborah and her department cross-trained three of the tech services staff, Fran, Mimi and Kim. Just in circulation basics, just in case they have some of the sources of support, just when we, on those rare occasions where we're shorthanded, so.
Training, great idea. Thank you. I don't have a question.
Yeah.
Is the internship position for the summer paid?
Sorry?
Is it a paid internship position, the one that we're asking from Simmons?
No, no, it's not a paid internship. It was for the experience. It would be somebody who's in the archives program at Simmons Graduate School.
Yeah, they give you credit. So it's a program that Simmons already has set up, and so we're hoping.
Okay, that's good.
It's not costing us anything.
But many organizations over the last few years, for equity reasons, have shifted so that they no longer have unpaid internships and OGBHs like that. So it might be different if it's for credit, that would be the exception.
It is for credit. It is for credit. Yeah.
Carol?
I was just going to say, it's really great to read about the school outreach that Children's is doing and the STEAM programs and the, you know, the young adult stuff that Erin is doing. It's really terrific. And this cross-training, it's all really good news. It's, and all the weeding, I think it's fabulous. It's, it's like a breath fresh air.
Yeah. Okay.
Moving on. Okay. So in personnel, we've hired two new part-time reference librarians in the reference department. They started on January third. Jackie Bateman, Jacqueline, Jackie Bateman, Lisa Acker-Rothenberg. We just finished off in the last couple of days with HR. We got hiring letters out and have official start dates for two new reference librarians in children's department. And once we finish up all the process with them, I'll give you their names too, but they should be starting the week of January seventeenth. So that leaves us almost fully staffed, dare I say, on a publicly broadcast meeting. Knock on wood.
That's great. I know that hiring is a lot, is very time consuming and important, so thank you.
And.
Welcome to.
Welcome to Jackie and Lisa.
Yes, definitely. Welcome aboard.
And now we're at the gifts. Would you like to do that now?
Yeah. Okay, let's take a look at the gift list on page two of the agenda.
For sure.
And if people are comfortable with having reviewed the list.
Need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion to accept all gifts on this list.
I just commented, one of my favorite books, I read all the time, was Herschel and the Hanover.
I had it as a kid, too. And it is great. Yeah.
All right.
I have a lot to read.
But I think I must have missed that one. Okay, so we have a motion in favor of accepting all gifts.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's, gifts are accepted.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, moving on, building in grounds. Kevin St. Peter is a new HVAC supervisor for the facilities department. He's made some indoor adjustments to the operational system. They made some adjustments, adjustments. Everything seems to be holding fairly steady. You got to knock on wood. The grandfather clock that's by near reference and the wall clock, if you might remember that one, right above the entry on Highland Avenue, those are out for repairs. Carpet in the community, that should say community room was clean. And the old Christians connected lights at the section of large print books on the first floor. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but please take a look. It should look somewhat brighter. You can see the items that are still pending. A couple of the last two bullets are items that have been in there for a long time. The one about the sink area inside the pantry, these were configured to accommodate wheelchair access, that's still pending. And the door alarms on the different door, doorways are still pending as well. But we're hoping that they're getting to that. Financial report stated, we only, sorry, go ahead.
Probably, especially when you're doing it remote, it might be good when you get to the end of each sort of topic area, just to ask if it's pause for a moment and ask if.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I just had a quick question. Kevin St. Peter, you said he's with Facilities Department. Is that the same thing as Building and Grounds Department of the town?
I think so, yeah, yeah. You, you buildings and grounds, you know.
Person that, same department that Angel works for?
Building maintenance.
Yes.
Building and maintenance.
Facilities.
Public facilities? I keep hearing different names for that.
Different levels.
So this is like a sub-department, I think. Buildings and, you know, because I can't remember the larger department, the name of it, but.
His job is heating and ventilation. He does his specific.
Yeah.
Under the umbrella of facilities.
Right, I'm just kind of interested in what, you know, whether that's what I hear is called buildings and grounds, is it the same thing as facilities, you know, just, just interested.
The building maintenance department. Okay. He is Angel.
Minute part. The bright-eyed page, the first day the lights were in for the large print, and it makes a huge difference for making sure you could see all the books. And also I've noticed patrons really like it.
Oh, good.
Feel so we've got good lighting in the large print area where it makes a lot of sense. Yeah. Those look great. Okay, thanks. You can proceed. Thanks.
Okay. Instead, the only monthly invoice we had for some canopy, six hundred forty-eight dollars. No purchase from Overdrive since December. The trust funds, I won't read through all of them. You can see those. Do you have any questions on any of that?
So the, what, when we purchased just twenty-one hundred dollars versus YA books, is there any particular category of books we're trying to make sure we get into the YA collection?
I mean, outside like everything that we're purchasing, we're trying to buy books that have to do with equity and diversity, but not, not that I know of off the top of my head that Erin's trying to get anything particular. I mean, she's trying to fill gaps wherever she sees demand.
Emphasis on, say, graphic novels or, well, you said equity inclusion.
Yeah, so graphics typically, we would, you know, Jenna prepares the financial report typically, and she'll write out the spending is usually differentiated if it's YA graphic novels versus just YA, like fiction and nonfiction. So if it doesn't clarify, it's usually just that general category of fiction and nonfiction. But if there's a particular, you know, thing that you're interested in, I can check in with Erin.
Just wondering if there's a general, you know, emphasis in any one direction in terms of our, you know, choice of books. That's all.
Between graphics and non-grafx or?
Well, in YA, in the YA department, my, my question was about YA, are there any particular types of books that were, Dimitri, you said diversity and inclusion. So that's a good, good to know. Anything further? Questions on the the trust funds? Okay, so we'll have a, we need to accept. We, we need to approve the trust fund. We need a motion to approve the trust fund.
I don't think so. I think this is all a, a, we've already.
Okay. Yep. Okay, so that's if for the trust funds, then you want to do the statistical reports, Dimitri?
Which one, the statistical? Yes. So it's very similar, the trends are similar to the last one. There are a couple of things I wanted to point out. The last thing I had there, public computer usage seemed to be up quite a bit. Computer guest passes are down. That's good. I'm hoping that means people are using their library cards. I had Deborah make a couple of changes for me, and we can change it back because I needed a little bit more clarity in looking at these numbers. So on the on the circulation one, I had her add, you'll see there's one, two, three, five columns. I had her, the third column is difference twenty-one to twenty-two because I wanted differentiation as to what that number meant. The fourth column says FY plus or minus cumulative difference. That was interesting to me because I want to know what that number meant. And the last column, I had her differentiate that a little percentage of month, the previous month, meaning like November to October, October to September. So that made it a little clearer for me, may not make a difference for you, but, and depends on what Kim thinks, we can always change it back, but that's just one little difference Deborah made. And on the, you might have noticed there's a sheet with annual the comparison of annual, and I thought that was interesting because all those numbers looked really good from twenty twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two. Do you have any questions on any of that? Have you had a chance to look at them?
Um, I did. Actually, I was very happy to see the annual list because I've been wondering, as I'm sure we all are, how we are bouncing back, we hope, to the pre-pandemic levels, and if we are, how, how much progress we're making on that. So I did take a close look at the annual circulation numbers, and I did see that our total circulation is really close in FY twenty-two, which is the most recent that you just put out, compared to FY nineteen, which is the farthest back I have.
Yeah.
They're, you know, FY nineteen, actually, it's, it's above FY nineteen. So total circulation is, and that includes digital as well as print books and all that. So they're both in the, above five hundred thousand annually. So, you know, we're still, as, as is not a surprise. I also compared pre-pandemic to this most recent report, the number of people entering the library is still down significantly. It was FY nineteen, three hundred thousand, now it's a hundred eighty-six thousand. Website hits, this, this is a little fuzzy because I know we put in a little, we put in a new website, but also I think the numbers are now that we have a new website, the counting of website hits is different. So that I don't know that we can really draw a lot of conclusions from. Computer use is, is down significantly from pre-pandemic levels from thirty-nine thousand to fourteen thousand. And then I looked at the adult reference questions and child reference questions. Those are also about, well, adult is about half of what it was in terms of adult reference questions. Child reference questions are getting close to back where they were. Thirteen, sixteen thousand is now fourteen thousand. And programs, adult programs are, are still sixty-two in FY nineteen versus forty-six now. YA was fifty-three in FY nineteen versus eighty-eight now, which is great. And child programs are, if this is correct, I'm reading here, child programs are pretty, or five hundred and eight child programs in FY nineteen versus FY twenty-two. Five hundred and eight child programs in FY nineteen versus FY twenty-two, only two hundred nineteen. So that I was wondering about a little bit, the child programs. Any other trustees, take a look at the?
I think I've asked this question last time, but I, I'm just curious to see, are we? It seems like quantity is, is an indicator, is a metric we're relying on heavily to. Confirm success. But I wonder if some numbers may be down because folks are being more self-sufficient online. So they don't have to come to the library, they do things, so, so, so I question the validity of, you know. Looking at numbers and increasing numbers, that's a metric.
It's just one way to do it and certainly the number of people entering the library, there's still a great reluctance on the place. You know, we're all wearing masks here. There's a reluctance to come into the building and be among other people. So, you know, and I'm sure that's reflected, what, what do the director and assistant director think about that?
I, I think that's true, I think that is reflective, I mean, not everybody's rushing back, a lot of people have come back. Like you said, you're wearing masks, some of us are doing this remotely. I think that's reflective of society in general, the people are reluctant to go back in. I, I mean, all of us have our own comfort levels with that and our own. Medical issues, so you know, yeah, I think that, I don't think it's, it's the quality of the program, but I think it's just a lot of people are still reluctant to come back into a public building.
Yeah, I'd agree. I think it's also just, you know, some numbers might be more meaningful than others or interpreted differently. You know, the number of people coming in could be lower, but it's also the same as what Anna's saying about. Whether that's because people have during COVID found that they liked a different service that they pay for and now they don't. Go to the library because they found the convenience easier or whatever, and so that's something that. Obviously, we want to look at and, and think about like how to make our services just as convenient as anything that you might pay for. But this is like. You know, in terms of the programs offered and things like that, you know, we used to have. The steam room open all the time, like every afternoon, that kind of thing, and that obviously adds up. So I think just the staff time and different things have happened, I'm not sure exactly, there's obviously been no. Change in terms of what we've asked them to do. It's just what we can staff and what they're seeing response to from people, so some of the programs they've tried. They didn't really get attendance at first, and so they try again a couple of months later, that kind of thing, so. It's still all related to coming back from COVID, I would say.
And, and just to add to that, I mentioned earlier that stat about computer usage, public computers such being up, but the computer passes, guest passes being down. And just reading and hearing what other libraries are experiencing as well. During COVID, a lot of people, you know, solve their computing needs. They may not have been confident, they wanted preferred to come into the library to get some help, but in the end, they needed to get on with things. And they either got, you know, smartphones or handheld devices, tablets. And that's reflecting, I think the fact to me that the guest passes are down, that's telling me that people have solved their computing needs in other ways.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah. Carol, you had something you wanted?
Well, I was just thinking that some of this time the building was closed, and so it's such a kind of a. Mixed bag of, you know, we're talking about programming, well, some were all virtual, but then they, somewhere.
But this is twenty twenty-two when the building was open the entire year.
But Carol's right, we did have a lot of virtual programming happening.
Switcheroo and some people, I mean, there was a bit of a, I think, kind of a. A sag in between coming back or when people got tired of virtual and they, but they didn't come back yet to. In person programs, so I mean, I think it's a little, it's complicated.
It is, and I, I think the whole sort of pandemic is still here. We're, you know, we're recovering, but it's not over, so, you know, it has a lot of effects in a lot of different ways that. We might not have even anticipated, but we're kind of starting to see how it plays out when we look at these numbers. So.
Yeah, anecdotally, I, our Tuesday afternoon book. Been hybrid, we were, you know, since September. And every month, we have more around the table and fewer. The same number of people, but we have more on the table and fewer on the screen.
So it's a gradual process.
It used to be, you know, three here, you know, twelve here.
Yeah, and Anna?
Yeah, I want to also point out that if you look at that downloadable, both audio and videos through the pandemic and even now. We've sustained, it, it seems like we have, if you look at the level of engagement through those means.
Yeah, they have held steady.
Yeah, yeah, so we are still present in the community.
Downloadable, but also even print, print books, I mean, the, the total circulation figures are, I've done very, very well.
I'm just also looking at the self-checkout, that is, the numbers are so high, which. Yeah, from the previous, so that is also an indication.
Engagement, yeah, yeah. So thank you for putting this annual list together, it really does, is the one thing that helps really us to kind of reflect over a period of years.
Thanks, Deborah, Deborah put it together for us, so.
Thanks, Kay, because she reminded me that Deborah needs to do it, so I asked. But we do have, this is something we are supposed to get around the fiscal year, so I'd expect to see it. It's on my calendar now for sure, so expect to see.
One last thing I want to mention, and Danielle just remind me, we're also, we're not tracking hotspots, laptops and Chromebooks, which. Patrons can take home in terms of computers, so. Lower guest passes, it's probably they have more availability to devices that we're loading out and that's not being tracked, so. That, that can also account for having less, less guest passes for computer usage.
One was what are transfers?
What are transfers?
On this, like the November twenty-second, November twenty-twenty-two sheet, there's like a list of transfers under registration, which is mostly empty. In terms of its row, I was wondering what transfers are and what should be there.
Anybody want to answer that?
Yep, transfers are things that we send out of the building. It's not really like a. Super useful statistic because we get. That statistic in a different way, so I've asked Deborah to stop counting it and I'm not sure why it was still included on that report. Get that in our heiress reporting as a separate.
My other, the other thing I wanted to mention was that I would assume that going forward in this annual. Statistical summary, we want to be tracking the library of things as a, as a breakout of our speculation. So we can see those numbers year on year. Just want to make sure we do that.
I, I think like, that's something I think we look at. Anyway, like Rand would be kind of looking at. Year after year, we're kind of attentive to, I'm not sure that, I want to get more granular necessarily with the monthly report because we could look at any collection.
No, I'm talking about the annual report that we just got, like, I would love to see the breakout of the library of things as part of the circulation statistics going forward on an, on an annual basis.
Sure, we'll add it.
Obviously, it doesn't mean anything right now because we just launched it on September.
Is there any reason not to, is there any, you know?
I think just because we could get that granular about literally everything that we have and our heiress reporting does really get pretty granular with a lot of that. Like it looks at personal equipment that we take out, that kind of thing, so if we're looking at that annual report that we already prepare. That a lot of that is broken out. But we can add it to this, I, I know I mentioned this like a year ago. But I, I do want to revamp how we're doing our monthly statistics and then that would affect our annual. Look as well because I would like it to more closely mimic what heiress looks like so that we can actually more easily compare and make sure that. We're not missing something in heiress or that we've misreported something in our annual, like in our month-to-month reports. So it's easier to kind of crosswalk the two, right now, this is not. I, as the director, don't find a lot of this information super useful, I would like to get different information, but we haven't really gotten to a place of. Hating that yet, so it's helpful to figure what, what the trustees would like to see in it as well. Because like I, I don't care about color pages printed necessarily versus just printed. So I, I want to revamp some of that stuff and figure out what the really important data is to show. We can talk about, you know, send, if you have ideas, please send it my way.
Yeah, well, I want to think for a minute again on the, what efforts you just mentioned about the library of things, what things. I think one benefit of us knowing, whether it's for the heiress report or whichever way it's easy. It could be a way to market and to promote, you know, how many people are taking out the, I don't know, the drone or whatever items we select. And it will be a way to promote this, that what we have to patron, you know. And also to approve to, to the, I think it was the elephant or the friends. Who provided the funds for the library of things.
The friends.
So sort, so have that information handy so that we can show that their, their donations, their funding is, is. Having some effect in the community. See, so, so from that angle, I see that is how, whether we do it every month and maybe not, maybe every quarter, maybe twice a year, once a year, I don't know. But there, there is a benefit of extracting that information and sharing it with the community, maybe not for our own purposes. For operationally, but it's more for, for branding.
And, and Eric.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that because between what you were saying, Kim, and what you were saying on. It seems like the strategic plan might be an opportunity to imagine what are the hallmark programs? That we really want to emphasize going forward and how can we have a statistical report that keeps track of those things, right? So that they're useful for the trustees, useful to you, Kim, but also are emblematic of the priorities that we're making around what we think are important. To track, and so that might be an opportunity following the strategic plan to, to kind of think about that. As an input to what this circulation or, you know, score report looks like.
That makes sense, yeah. Yeah, so. So strategic plan, well, she's going to, I guess Dimitri's going to report shortly on the strategic plan progress. Do we have any further comments on the statistical reports? And then we have new business, but we have no new businesses, we purposely tried to keep this agenda a little light. So no new business, we do have old business, so strategic planning updates.
Yeah, so. Dimitri, I'll handle that, thank you. So Kelly has been in touch and has a draft kind of going. Obviously, we missed this meeting and that's due to me, not her, so. I'm excited to see what she has out of that and to share it with everyone, but right now, that's, that's really the only report. Is that we're, we're pretty close to having a draft to present, so I would say probably for next month.
Okay, I'll be excited to hear. Take, you know, hear about the, the draft and I don't know if Rob and Jay have anything to add, given that you are the strategic plan working group?
No, we're just looking forward to the report, I wasn't sure, she really never, Kelly, I guess, never had a particular. Conversation with the trustees as a group, we had, was there supposed to be such a conversation?
Well, we did, yes, remember, we had a meeting that.
Just that one meeting at the beginning?
That was kind of the point where we all brought our ideas in and.
That was a preliminary.
Yeah, since then. I, you know, we don't, I don't think there has been anything for. So would you like to have her come in and talk with us once she presents the strategic plan or what, what makes sense?
Well, only in the sense that I'm curious, I'm curious to know what, what's been learned and what, and what the thoughts are about all of this, but I'm, I'm happy. To wait and see, see the draft of the report for, for that, if that makes sense.
Does that make the most sense to have the draft come in as the next juncture where the trustees?
Compared to us, for example, having a conversation with Kelly about the preliminary conclusions while she's. Drafting the report, I don't feel strongly about it one way or another, but that's my question about the process.
Yes, so the work plan that she submitted and that, you know, was there when we hired her, did not include a conversation about that. Until the presentation of a draft at a public meeting and then that would be the trustee opportunity to provide feedback on that. Because it is directly under your purview, it would, it would be a, a public meeting. To discuss that stuff, but the draft would be sent out as soon as we have it in preparation for whatever meeting it aligns with. Which I really am hoping is February, and if that doesn't happen, it'll absolutely be my fault, so. You know, we're, we're on it and we're almost there, I think.
Kim, did you say the public meeting might happen in February?
Uh, it would be your trustee meeting as a public, you know, as. It's just a, we can't have like a, like a separate trustee meeting that's not a public meeting to discuss the findings of it, you know?
I think Jay may have been referring to the, he and Rob as to the, the working advisory.
Oh, I see, I see, is that, yeah, if you would like to do that, we can, we can make that.
I don't know, Rob, did you have any expectations along those lines or, or any thoughts or preferences?
You know, it might be nice just to get a very quick status update from Kelly. You know, obviously, we wouldn't be deliberating, we wouldn't be discussing the, the substance or the conclusions, that's, that's for the public meeting, but. It might be good just to get a quick status update at some point before that comes out.
Before the draft comes out.
Yeah, I guess what, what would be interesting to hear about is just the, the engagement from the various constituencies. And you, and you've provided, you know, a good deal of that, but it'd be great to hear from Kelly as well.
But I also defer to Kelly as to whether she, she thinks it would be useful to, to talk with me and Rob as the liaison for the trustees. Prior to completing a draft of the report.
I will come back to that. When I return to work on Thursday.
So, and then there are practical updates, I understand Colleen Tesco has, I saw her on. Antique Roadhouse last night? So, yeah, so what's, what's the report?
Yeah, so, um, they, so Colleen submitted a report, we realized. That one item was missing from it, one of, one of the YF items, so she's going to send back a new report. Basically, most of our items did. Increase in value or sign value from her. And I'll send out the final report when she actually. Resubmits it, and then the next step is to send it to Dave Davison, the assistant town manager and chief financial officer. And he would, you know, we would be addressing whether or not the town's insurance is adequate for coverage. And to. Start the procedural ball rolling with what lending could look like. We would start with our, with the town's insurance company about what their requirements would be, and then we would look at that and. And go, you know, add in more and come. We would share the procedure with the trustees, but then the policy itself will have to be written. To refer to a procedure and, and make sure that the trustees are voting and looking over proposals to take the things. But that's kind of the steps is, is it needs to go to Dave Davison once she's submitted the actual final report. And at that point, I will send it out to all of you as well, but the.
I, I do understand that they, we won't put out values here, but there, there's substantial value in that. Let's just put it that way. It is public information, so all of us can access it when.
There are like two that went down slightly in value. Because of condition. And I'm not really sure that there's anything for us to really do to restore the values. I would say compared to the rest of a little less insignificant amount of dollars and not really a source of concern for me, they were not. Like Wyatt, the original paintings or anything like that.
Yeah, I know, some are less, you know, some are actual paintings and some are illustrations and some are just sketches and prints and. And so there's various levels of, of, you know, value to those pieces. And so did Colleen say she, I seem to remember she said she might be giving us some kind of advice or guidance on conservation, not restoration, but conservation and taking care of the, the art going forward?
Yeah, I was gonna have Danielle have a conversation with her about that, like, because there were two items. Like, there's a plate and something else that had declined slightly in value. Just to make sure that we're doing-
Not getting ground.
The things.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and, you know, things like sunlight affect art, you know, so any advice we can glean from Colleen about how we're, and Carol had something to say?
Not the sunlight, sunlight, but also interior lighting.
Interior lighting.
Um, you know, there are some kinds that are, you know, worse for the artwork than others, so.
So is Colleen gonna share, I seem to remember some just brief conversation from her saying that she might provide information about that? You know, so probably we should pull, you know, ask her to do that.
Yep, I'm gonna have Danielle reach out to her.
Yeah, I think I got some information from somebody that she, she-
Oh, you did?
I did get some, yeah, it just seemed a little premature to get into it at this point, yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, Tom?
Kim? Was, uh, one of the ones that decreased in value, the one over the fireplace, with the the dragon?
Yes. Yes.
That was because it was a drop of paint on it?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Decreased in value? Oh, that I don't know.
Oh, no, it's not one that decreased in value. It was by war bonds, which I think is just like a poster thing, and then a physical plate. That I actually don't know that that's a YF thing.
Syracuse, China one.
Yeah. That one that's over the fireplace?
The one that was by the-
Is doing fine, let's put it that way.
When it was painted, when the stone was painted.
A drop of paint got on it?
Came on it.
Okay, well, it's not necessarily affecting the value for what I saw. Okay, good question though, Tom. Yeah, well, let's look for that drop of paint. Colleen didn't call out the drop of paint as a problem, it sounds like, so far as-
It is, no.
Okay, good. All right, so space planning, next item.
Yes. Erhard, do you wanna update everyone on the schedule?
I mean, we are, now that we're going to get sworn in before this January 23rd, because we're now going to be members of the the planning, building committee.
Permanent Public Building Committee.
Permanent Public Building Committee, thank you. Permanent Public-
You don't wanna be joined the-
Yeah, no, yeah. The, uh, so, yeah, that'll be temporary members because we'll be actually voting on those proposals along with members of the PDC that are, that are on the subcommittee with us, looking at those. And so I guess you got the, did you get this number from them, this eight number, is that where we're at right now, is it today?
No, it's more, um. We're gonna have quite a fun weekend. So, the deadline for this-
Due at the end of this week, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I was just saying they're due at the end of this week.
Yeah, they're due at 2:00 PM on Thursday, and then Hank Half will drop off, I think, copies, like physical copies, and email them out. Yes, and then by Tuesday, we should, we'll have to discuss and select our top three to then interview.
Do you folks have a meeting time set up?
I don't believe we do.
No, and I'm not sure, actually, I'll check in with Hank about how he would like to facilitate that, like if they typically would just, you know, if he would just call Erhard and I to ask us our top three and I, I'm not actually sure, so let me touch base.
Okay, well, that should be a really fascinating process once it gets rolling.
Well, it's gonna roll very quickly, yeah, we're gonna be, have to read all of them this weekend.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, just to Tom's point here, case three of the, the-
Director's report?
Yes. Number four, permanent building-
Yeah.
PDC.
Permanent Public Building Committee.
Permanent-
Permanent Building Committee.
Yeah, not-
Oh, planning- It does say planning board there.
Tom wrote it up, and it's the same, by the way, in the minutes. Uh, yeah, minutes, there, it says select board.
So we might need to update the minutes, which we already approved.
Yeah, so I just-
So somewhere in the minutes it says planning board instead of permanent-
Yes, it does.
All right. So, Beth, can you?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, second. Okay, so. Permanent Public Building Committee, right, Permanent Public Building Committee, correct? Okay.
No, I remember reading it and it's on the election, it's like-
Okay, so now we have to vote to all in favor of accepting the most recent amendment to the minutes of December, whatever the date. December 13th. Second, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
A second, okay. Thank you. Okay. So, on to the budget update. Finance Committee meeting reminder, that's Kim and I.
Yes, and that is the 20th, on the January 25th at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, it's just relentless, you better get back to work, Kim. Yeah, it's a lot to come back. Just anything, you should take the time you need to heal. Okay. Anything further on that at the moment?
No, that's the only, sorry, anything I have on it.
So Equity Inclusion Resolution, anything to be reported this month?
Dimitri, do you have?
No, okay. All right, so, and then moving on to the Library Arts and Exhibitions Committee report from Carol, where there's been a lot of interesting activity?
Um, just a couple of things, the first of all was that Larry Flipper, the Biblia Quots collage, he's an artist in Maine, and he withdrew after he'd been scheduled, and we were counting on him for February. And so to work around that, Gayle and has arranged for Laurie Bogdan's bird collages that are up right now. You can go see them upstairs and online to extend into mid-February. And Gayle and is picking up the artwork from the owner for the March exhibit early, and she'll hang that exhibit. So there won't, really won't be a bear wall for long. I think we did try to get, to slot in the bones exhibit, but that just didn't work out for them, that was not a good time for them. So that's, that's what's gonna happen there unless there's some objection from this board. And the only other thing is, I kind of held off in asking for this board's approval about an exhibit on the subject of Pilota Mor, which is was a sort of a similar to a Holocaust in Ukraine. And this is historical. And the, the applicant is very eager to present, but she's gonna have to work with Gayle, and this is where it stands. The, our committee has approved the idea of having it, but subject to it become, you know, the materials being, having the makings of it a successful display case exhibit.
So it's not a wall exhibit?
It's not a wall, it's not a wall exhibit. It's a display case, and it's an educational thing, and I, you know, it's an important topic, the Ukrainians and news, and, you know, it's something I'm not familiar with, and, you know, it's, um-
I assume this is about the mass graves in the Ukraine, Pauline Worf, no?
No.
Is it different from that?
So in any case, that's where that stands, the next step with this artist is for, to make sure that she has materials that will display well, that fit our guidelines for the display case. And so that's where that stands, and when that's settled, then I will come back to you and ask for the board's approval.
So can you just give, give us a gist of what Pilota Mor is then?
Yes. Let me just see what I wrote. It was really a man-made famine in the Soviet era, Ukraine, until millions, millions of Ukrainians died of starvation. And, you know, it's been debated whether it was because Stalinist policies or they were actually intentionally overlooking Ukraine and, you know, caused this, but in any case, it was a very, you know, a terrible event and something that isn't really in the state's curriculum, history curriculum, or really in the textbooks. So I think it's worthy of the exhibit, just needs to be the right material.
Okay.
To have an effective exhibit.
Important.
That's it, I will come back to, we do not have the next meeting scheduled. I'll probably wait until we know exactly where we're headed for this, if we, if we have the second year, part of the year planned, and this particular exhibit nailed down a little bit better.
Thank you, Carol, it sounds like this. No, I'm spelling it from here, I heard it mentioned on NPR, but I don't know how it spells.
Oh, oh, okay.
Please.
Yep.
Anything further on library and arts? If it's, no? Any other comments? So then in that case, we'll move on to the MacGyver series, where are we on that?
Nothing.
So have we, I'm just trying to remember, we, I know that you have, it's two, right?
It's three, depending on, yeah. The discretion has to organize it.
Okay. You're shooting for one more, yeah, okay. There will be. When you figure out the next step?
I just thought of decide between an anxiety expert or a or, or something about science, so. No, I'm trying to keep it on beat, but.
Anxiety. Well, we're all really nervous.
To be an issue, so like, you know, like it's-
Yeah, it is. It is, that's important.
Anxiety seems relevant.
Yes, always relevant. Okay, so, thank you, Anna, and then do we have any report from the Friends tonight?
I'll say a few things. First, there's a book sale scheduled for the end of January. And so that's, you know, a nice thing. There's been just, you know, the holiday season, so there hasn't been that much, but to give an update on the event, the April event with Doris Kearns Goodwin, the contract that has been signed, so it's official. The process of, of the fundraising and the sponsorship is, was, I think, that they were planning to wait until after the holidays before really moving forward with that, but needless to say, if anyone has any suggestions or ideas or, or connections, that's a, you know, part of making the event a success, between that and between selling the tickets, those are going to be some key components. Plus, of course, defining the event, make it as, as strong an event as possible. So open to any, any thoughts about that. There's a meeting scheduled Friday of this week, I was actually going to mention it, Kim and Dimitri, the youth guys. Relating to the event, we scheduled a meeting with the representatives of the high school. We're meeting with the principal and with the librarian and, and the social, the head of the social studies department to see how we might get the high school students involved somehow in the event to try and broaden the, the reach, the scope of the program one way or another. So we're open to any ideas that, that they may have as well as anyone here, and I wasn't sure if, if the library has someone who they designated as the liaison with the schools who might want to, if available, join us for that meeting, it's, you know, simply relating to the event itself, but, you know, we're open to to the library's ideas about, you know, that, that relationship as well. We have a meeting, I have a meeting scheduled with next week with the, with the person at GBH who's gonna be sort of ma-managing their contribution as a media sponsor, and so we'll know more about exactly what, what's involved with that next weekend. And Doris Kearns Goodwin's agency just designated as event representative, it's gonna be the person who will be dealing. Joan, I know we spoke with you and Beth before the holidays about, you know, hopefully including somehow the foundation. And I know you spoke with Margaret, you know, a week ago, and so I was hoping maybe I can follow up and talk with you, you know, about all that, and maybe even join a, a, a foundation meeting to, to, to talk about it. But at your convenience, would, would be happy to have a follow-up conversation, you know, to, to understand what, what are the issues and concerns from the foundation's point of view, if there are any, to see if we can figure it out, which I think would be ideal, if at all possible, a way to, 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 to combine, you know, forces for the event. But, so open-minded about that, but we'd like to have a conversation, you know, to follow up. And again, anyone here has thoughts or suggestions or ideas, you know, about any, anything? You know, the, the work is, needs to be done in terms of promoting, and that's, I suppose, sponsorship's gonna be key, and so hopefully that'll be a successful effort.
So, does the media sponsorship include them doing the save the date and the sponsorship packages?
What do you mean on the sponsorship package?
Usually, there's a document that explains a different sponsorship level, Paul, you know, et cetera. And that's like the first thing, you wanna meet with a prospective donor.
Right, and then, and there's a reference to GBH, obviously, as media sponsor.
But somebody has to create the document that is presented when you are-
So the, the, there are, there are folks at the Friends who are part of the program committee, Deborah Baylin and Paul and Susan Churn and others who, who put together a draft. You know, that, with Margaret's involvement in my review also, as a proposal to the funders. Be happy to share that, you know, with you, that, that, that stuff has tentatively been, been prepared.
That's been doing, that's been done, and to save the date of thinking of kind of like a big event, right? So folks have in mind, just that kind of like planting the seed.
I think that's a great idea, and I think that's the sort of advice and guidance that, that perhaps we'll be getting from the, the folks at GBH who have experience-
Okay, that was one of the-
You know, producing these sort of events. And there was also the possibility still of working with an outside event advisor, but my impression from the last conversation with GBH is that they don't think it's necessary, you know, so anyway, that, that's, 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 that's the update.
I was just gonna say, there was a very nice program sponsored by the Friends on the weekend.
Yes, I was out of town, but-
It was really good, yeah.
Did you get to go to it?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
A lot of us went.
Was there good attendance?
Very good. It was full.
It was full, how wonderful.
Yeah, it was probably eighty, at least eighty, no, let's say, I don't know, eighty people maybe signed up, I don't know how many actually were there, but it was a good crowd.
And it was really interesting, it was about her tracing her ancestry, her Italian roots, but also she was able to universalize it across to, to make it relevant to people of all different kinds of ancestries, and I just thought it-
I was sorry, sorry, I missed it, I was out of town, I, I thought it'd be very interesting, and we have other, you know, they've had, we've had consistently, honestly, strong events at the Friends. Someone before mentioned the Antique Roadshow, and you may know that Marcia Demko, the executive producer of Antique Roadshow, is coming, I think, in March.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you want, this, this is what I picked up at, you might just pass that down.
Yeah.
So the next one is the president of Olin College.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's President of Olin College, in early February, then Marcia from Antique Roadshow, so they've been getting consistently strong attendance at the events, but-
Very good events.
Yeah.
So go back to the event.
Yeah.
Since we are having so many events consistently, and we want to start planting seeds and raising awareness, how soon could a save the date kind of a flyer so that we can start sharing, you know, at these events, you know?
There's, Friends are having a program committee- There's a, Friends are having a program committee, just again, just signed the contract over the holiday. The Friends Program Committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'm scheduled to meet on Wednesday of next week, I think, with the GBH person.
Okay.
And so we're, we're really just starting to, to figure it out. I don't think anybody feels that, that we're, you know, we're in a rush to get like save the date. I think the more, the more immediate concern is hopefully we can raise the sponsorship, you know, money.
Yeah, I, I think from, from, if you want a community to attend, as I know families are.
Saving the days makes sense.
Planning, you know, the February vacation, April vacation.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm making, I'm making note of it. I'll, I'll, I'll raise it when we talk to those folks. That's a great idea. And then I know through all the channels, the, the, the need and promotion channels. But that's all part of the plan to communicate with Cindy really good solid.
Right, right. As long as you have one, one flyer that, that everybody agrees on, that is very obviously professionally made.
Yeah.
That has, and even if you want to start, I don't know, well, this may be a second step. But if you want to start serving that in the calendar, the library's calendar, so people can.
You were the same. I, I think these are all the right questions. And then, and these, these are the things we want to be focusing on over the next few weeks to get.
Yeah. Yeah, you have, it's three, three months.
Right, but still.
It is. It is exciting to have a preeminent historical writer appearing here in Needham is very cool. So. Okay, so that's the Friends Library Foundation. I believe we have Joan here. Yes?
Hi, how are you doing? Um, the, actually Beth and I are meeting with different members of our board individually before, in advance of our next meeting. Our next LFN meeting is not until January 26th. And we want to have a conclusion to how we'll approach the donation. We do have a few members that feel that this is maybe not responsible to our donors. There is some hesitation that this might not be the right way to, to spend the money.
But. I'm not sure I follow.
Well, there's just a few, I mean, Beth and I are speaking to each director individually, just to get a sense of how they feel about, you know, supporting Doris Kearns Goodwin program. Because it is a lot of money. So we thought we would speak individually to each member. And then our meeting on January 26th, we should be able to have a conclusion that, you know, some type of donation will be made for sure, but we can't really specify at this point how it's going to conclude. We just, we're getting a lot of, you know, different, you know.
It's a discussion.
Yeah, yeah. So it's going to be, and I'm surprised because I didn't think this would be such a long process, but it is.
Your meeting, your meeting is on a Thursday evening?
Yes, the 26th.
So unfortunately, I, I, I would have maybe hoped to have a chance to talk with them if, if it would be helpful, but I teach on Thursday evenings.
I'll be there.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we'll, we'll go from there. Well, hopefully we'll have a conclusion for you. We have been a little preoccupied by the inscriptions that we sell. We have, at this point, we have about, we have a little over 23,000 in inscription donations. But a few of those donations, we have to kind of track that. We're speaking with the donors because they haven't decided whether they really want an inscription or not. So our, our numbers are a little fluid in terms of how many inscriptions we have sold. And of course, we have a lot of donations that have come in that are separate from the inscriptions. So we're waiting, we're going to kind of just do it all, do all the math. And so hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have a good grasp of, of what our funds have bought in this year. But the, the window inscriptions, which were 500 apiece, have, we have almost, almost $14,000 in, in donations just for window inscriptions. And approximately 10,000 in the staircase balustrade inscriptions. So they came in pretty well. We're still getting a few more in. So we'll have a, a, a better picture really towards the end of the month, how it all went. And of course, we have our own expenses that we have to meet out of this. You know, just the, the inscriptions themselves and the whole donor management web page that we have that has to, we pay for that as well. So we'll, we'll have a better picture at the end of the month. That's it. Thank you.
Good. Thanks for all the good work you're doing for the library's benefit, Joan. Wonderful thing. Any further comments from the trustees? Okay. All right. So that, that concludes most of our agenda. Tonight, under trustees' comments, I think we have a few people who have some information, some news to share. So anyone want to begin?
You, I'll let you start.
Whatever. As I had, probably a good number, you know, I planned to only serve three turns on this for nine years, seemed like a good amount of time. And I feel like I've contributed what I have to contribute. And there are lots of people on the wings. It seems like the new ideas that are, you know, there's a lot going on here, a great future. And I'm thrilled to have been part of this for a while and, you know, ready for someone else to contribute their ideas. So I'm not planning to run again. That's for sure. That's sweet.
And just to me, you have three, plus two more meetings after this, February, March. And so we will.
We'll be navel.
Not navel, right?
We'll be, we'll be gone. Our last meeting will be, Carol's last meeting.
Last meeting will be March. Yes. And Carol, you, you know, we don't need to say how valuable you, immensely valuable you have been. And we're not saying goodbye yet. We're not saying goodbye yet. So that's Carol's announcement. And I think we have other.
Yes. After 47 years as a trustee, I've decided not to seek reelection. And it's because I think that it's time for the next generation to pick up the torch and become involved and share their talents. I know there are many talented citizens out there. I feel that I still want to serve the library in some capacity, but not in an elected position. Now we'll reverse Sherman's statement. If two more people don't take out papers by Groundhog Day, I will take out papers because I don't want the embarrassment of an unsealed trustee's.
Oh, interesting. Okay, well.
A challenge. Well, it is a challenge, you know. If you, you said you wanted to become involved with the library, you know, you're, you're on top.
Now, and you, you're doing so. Well, you know, I'm not the only one to say this, but Tom, you know, you have really contributed more than anyone could imagine to keeping the Needham Library in amazing and wonderful place to be. And assuming that what you're saying does come, you know, happen, you will be deeply missed. And, but we're not saying goodbye yet tonight.
If I can just add my own comments to this news, I, I, I would just like to, to thank you both. You know, I'm, I'm one of several people who joined the board within the last few years. And the two of you have been, you know, just, just great models for us. Your seriousness, seriousness of purpose and kind collegiality and, and, and the special strengths that each of you offer, it's, it's going to be, you know, I just want to express my appreciation personally for, for everything you've done. I figured it out. And if I want to catch up with you, Tom, I'm going to have to live until at least 111. But anyway, I just, you know, I, I know everyone feels the same way, but I, I wanted to express.
And we'll have our kind of formal goodbye in March, which will be both Carol and Tom's, we think, last meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
May I also add, I want to thank both of you for your generous time. I know Carol has been, has spent a lot of time on the phone. And Tom is always so gracious with helping us with, you know, the accurate information. So thank you. It's been, you know, it just, you don't know how good you have it, so you don't have it anymore.
Yeah. We also have other members of the board to touch base with. Eric, you want to let us know your status?
So my special appointment ends at March. So I started in July. And I need to run for election to stay here. And I have taken out nomination papers to run for a full three-year term.
You have them here?
I do have them here. So happy to grab some, some other trustees up before we leave the building. But I did want to announce that I'll be.
Excellent. So happy that you're, keep on running, so to speak. And for the rest of us, I will just declare, you know, I have one more year, now two more years, and I plan to continue, of course. And other members of the board wanted to make their status clear going forward.
I have, I have one more year, my term that's in 2024. I am not clear how things, for us, is like month by month. The way that my family and my, so I am, you know, committed to the end of the my term and we're hoping things, you know, things will turn out. Frank, the other issue is, and I think very first start with you, the past, that I don't know if I can fulfill the chair responsibilities. And that's something that I'm still trying to figure out. So just want to put it out there, see if I need to be supportive and as engaged as possible, but I'm now have different work responsibilities and I'm rushing to the meetings. And I, I don't want to, you know, I, I want to, because usually it disturbs a lot more attention that I can perhaps give at this time. So I am a little torn about how to handle that. So.
Thank you for being, you know, sharing, being candid with us.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm open to ideas and I don't know what.
There's a delay, so it's tough to know the right moment to jump in. I was going to say, you know, historically, even though we, we have kind of this informal, not informal rotation policy, but it's not set in stone under our bylaws. It says that, you know, rotation is encouraged, but it can be changed based on circumstances. And I understand that the, the chair role has not always strictly followed that rotation rule for a variety of reasons. And for what it's worth, I'm, I'm certainly planning on staying on. My, my term is up in two years, but I plan on staying on after that. And I'm, I'm open to, you know, any role in the rotation during that period.
And so, yes, Rob and I are in sync in terms of when our terms expire. So both of us have two more years. And I also have been definitely planning to complete the two years and who knows beyond that. And Jay, what's your?
You're, you're, you're on the same cycle.
I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not sure what my status is. I haven't geared up my election campaign, but I.
But you are, you have at least one more.
You and I had papers together and then we collected signatures.
That's right. So we would have two more years.
You both have one.
Until the 2024.
One more year, one more year after starting April. That's correct.
You know, I, I.
You plan to be with us.
My, my, my plan is to continue if, if possible.
To.
I'd like to.
So everybody, okay. So all, what, so what? I'm coming to is we now have two open seats coming up, right? And so I think all of us.
Three, because I'm technically not.
Yes, we have three. You're, you're running. We're going to get out and vote for you. We need to.
More people besides.
We need to attract more.
Your launch, I can't say reelect, it's a retain.
Yes.
So with that in mind, I think that we need to, you know, we all need to think about getting the word out. You know, Anna posted on the Facebook page yesterday. I've been also doing some posting too. It's pretty quick that we need to kind of put the word out that people who are interested.
When do the papers have to be filed?
You know, signatures have to be collected over the coming months. If anybody knows anybody. Also, the trustees and the foundation, Joan, if there's anyone on the foundation that seems like an appropriate person to serve on the board, please. You have a meeting coming up soon. Or maybe you could just put the word out to your members.
Okay, well, we'll get that word. Yes, we'll share.
And this is a big group, you know, there's, there may be somebody there who wants to serve on the board, right?
LFN has a lot of new members too. So some of them may be interested in, in getting involved at the board level.
Please.
And there were a couple of people who, who applied for the position the last time who we were.
I have, so that's the next thing. I have now reached out to all the people who, who applied and expressed interest in continuing and have not, not one of them has said that they're interested in running.
Did any of them ever follow up with either the Friends or the Foundation in terms of, who were not already participating? Who kept, who were already in law?
She was already part of the Friends.
Yeah. So she's continued to do that. And the other two, I, as far as I know, I don't know that they have.
Yes, it doesn't ring a bell from the Friends angle.
The, the other applicants didn't want to run.
Yes, one of them didn't run. I didn't reach out to him because he made it clear he didn't want to run. The other two I did reach out to and one refunded and is very on, non-committal, not sure. The other ones didn't respond. So that's kind of, I just wanted to, you know, communicate that status that the people that did apply for the vacancy last spring are not exactly rushing to join the board to run for election. And maybe the, the, the running for election card feels, you know, that's a little of a bit of an intimidating thing to do for some people. So that might be the barrier. So, okay. So everybody get the word out. Ask the Friends, ask the Foundation and ask all of our friends and families in Needham.
We put in paper.
What paper? Right. The hometown, you know, actually the hometown weekly has been running press releases. So who knows? Maybe they would, I could, I could write something up. So, okay.
Do you, do you think it'll be helpful to, to provide some of the main duties? Because I think it's for some, at least I find myself explaining to folks, what does that mean? What do you do? You know, so at least maybe a few bullets of pieces.
Some of the language, yes.
Policy and.
We have in, on our trustees' page, which I want to update, I'll be sending something into the library staff to update the trustees' page. That kind of spells out the duties and responsibilities. And we can use that line. If anybody needs and wants language to share on, by email or on social, there is language there describing.
But for the hometown, for example, or whatever.
Yes, absolutely. Like a list of what is it that we do?
Yeah.
And clear, easy to understand language. Any other thoughts or concerns? Night? Okay. Well, I think we're coming to that moment. We're finishing early tonight. Kim and Dimitri, thank you for collaborating in your presentations tonight.
I'm happy to see you.
And Kim, yes, we're very happy. Are you, you're back full-time Thursday? Is that what we're hearing?
I came back yesterday. Tomorrow I have off because we have this weekend project to do. So, and I have some follow-up appointments and things. So I'll be back in the office on Thursday.
I'm sure the library staff, our wonderful staff will give you the support you need to kind of enter at a pace that makes sense for your health. And, and if we can do anything, please call on us. All right. So I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn. Okay, second.
Second.
Second by Carol. All in favor of adjournments tonight? Say aye. All opposed? Re-journ.